Good evening, citizens of Lewisburg Town Council. And welcome to our November meeting of the Lewisburg Town Council. I want to thank you for coming tonight, which is a Monday night. Normally, we usually meet on the second Tuesday. However, with the upcoming Veterans Day that was meeting on Tuesday, we chose to meet it today, the Town Council meeting today. And I want to thank y'all for coming out. And we begin by having our roll call.
Mayor Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Stover. Councilwoman Woods. Councilwoman Stein. Councilwoman Wright. Councilwoman Baker. Councilwoman Clancy.
Thank you. Item number two is our invocation. And Reverend Rose, could I ask you to give our invocation tonight?
In the Father, Son, and Holy Name, we thank you for this day and we thank you for this opportunity to come and conduct business that will deal with the affairs of Lewisburg Town. We ask your blessings as we come together. We ask that things will be done decently in order and that you will be with us. In Jesus' name, we do pray, give thanks, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And okay. Item number four is the adoption of the agenda. Counselor, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to put in at item number six, swearing in of our new officer for the Lewisburg Police Department. And I'd like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to insert that in at item number six or five. Yeah, item number six on the agenda for that. I move, did I get a second? It's been moved and properly seconded that we amend our agenda to include a swearing in of a new Lewisburg police officer. All in favor? All opposed? And now, counsel, could I get a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda with the amendment? It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt the amended agenda. All in favor? All opposed? Next item is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes that we would like your approval on, counsel. Minutes from October 14th, 2025, which was our regular Town Council meeting, as well as October 28th, 2025, which was our audit presentation meeting. If no corrections to those minutes, could I get a motion for approval?
Make a motion we approve the process of minutes from October 14th and October 28th, 2025.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve our minutes for October 14th, 2025, which was our regular October meeting, as well as our October 28th, 2025 audit presentation meeting. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes half. Now, the amended agenda there. Could I ask Officer Robert Simon come forward? And there's the chief there as well.
Robertson comes up from Rocky Mountain. Almost four years of experience in the world.
We have our driver here. Do you have a family member, someone here that would wish to hold this in your honor as well? Not ask them to go forward. Aye.
Aye.
That's your name.
Robertson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will be alert and vigilant.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced by any matter.
That I will not be influenced by any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As a law enforcement officer.
As a law enforcement officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Duties and abilities.
Duties and abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God. All right. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Franklin County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month. Each year municipalities and state adopt an amendment to honor or to recognize the hunger and homeless situation that we have in our community, as well as other communities as well. And we here in Lewisburg adopt this proclamation because we are aware of this problem and we do do the best we can in assistance with other nonprofits to help, you know, alleviate this problem in our community. And we have this proclamation tonight. And I'd like to ask Ms. Kegley to come forward and I will read a portion of this. This is a very long proclamation. She has agreed that we kind of abbreviate this a little bit. And I will do so. And it's designed, it's called the The Proclamation for Franklin County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month for November. And it reads, whereas for over 25 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness has sponsored a National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And Franklin County Interfaith Council, founded in 2018, came together to address these social issues in our area from a faith-based standpoint. Through collaboration among other faith-based organizations, Franklin County Interfaith Council seeks to support those facing hunger, housing, and health barriers while also instilling hope. Whereas the theme of Franklin County Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month is, speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves, for the rights of all who are marginalized. Speak up and judge fairly. Defend the rights of the poor and needy. That is from Proverbs 31, chapter eight through nine, verse. Be it further resolved that the board of that the Lewisburg Town Council encourages all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, and private, public, and nonprofit services. In witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Lewisburg to be affixed this tenth day of November 2025. Ms. Kegley, I present this proclamation to you as the Interfaith Council, mentioning our support for this issue in our community. Thank you. One, next item on the agenda is public comments. This is where we ask the citizens, where you have an opportunity to come before the county, the council, and share your comments, concerns that you would like for us to know. You have three minutes to state your case. And first on the agenda is Ms. Kegley. May come forward, please.
Here we are, Kegley, 120 Jolly Street, Lewisburg. Mr. Mayor and Town Council members and folks from the community. The Interfaith Council, as you just have heard, does take. We do think a lot about hunger and homeless, and that's two of our four tenets. The other two are health and hope. So during the month of November, we have several events. Couple have already passed. But on the 18th at 5:30, there will be a vigil on the Courthouse Square. And we do ask that everybody please attend. It won't be very long. You can bring a chair if you want to. We have a couple, two or three speakers. One of them will not be me, so you won't be there all night. But do plan to come and support the people in this community that are living with these issues. And then, the next event is a Thanksgiving dinner. If some of you remember, years ago, the Murphy House started feeding the people in the community. And it wasn't just hunger and homeless. It was anybody that wanted to come and have Thanksgiving dinner. So it's a great community event. Then, when the Murphy House closed, a blessing took it over and has been doing, was doing it at the college. And then, of course, COVID came. So we were approached, the Interfaith Council, by the president of the college and asked to revive this program. So on the 27th, from noon to three, and we do think that those hours will be extended. As far as we knew, as of 12 o'clock today, we have 400 people at least coming for dinner. So please come to the college. It's free. We're not asking for donations or anything else. It's just a free community event. And one of the most exciting things for us is there will be 50 students coming from Job Corps. And this comes from the thing in July when we thought Job Corps was going to close. And we've developed a really very tight working relationship with Job Corps now. So they're bringing their bus and 50 students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the review of fines and fees. Mr. Sattifai.
Mayor, members of the council. The first item we have is a review of fines and fees. The town has been experiencing significant growth in current costs for the provision of services related to that growth, specifically in the planning, public works, and solid waste departments. There's a number of forms and applications that citizens, developers, applicants produce for the planning office. And there are a number of fees that have either been lower than the average municipality size of the town of Lewisburg or just not charged at all. So these fees are very typical of municipalities and planning departments. And it would help a small town such as ours recoup time and money for providing these services and then some of the fines that are related to code enforcement. The schedule of fees that was adopted on February 19th is listed, is the first list of fees. Then subsequently, the next page right after that is a list of the changes. So I'll kind of go through those. The first one is the zoning permit residential increased from $50 to $150. The second one, zoning permits for commercial applications increased from $150 to $250. Then zoning permits for multifamily, as we may see more multifamily proposals and applications in the near future. From, we were not charging a fee for multifamily previously. So that fee is set at $300. A certificate of appropriateness, we have a fee set of $100, whereas we were not charging for certificate of appropriateness applications before. That has to do with the historic district here in Lewisburg. We have a number of houses that are on the national register for the historic district, and then we have a Lewisburg historic district. As time goes on, I see more and more applications and proposals for work done at those residences. And I think that the town, you know, typical of a municipality should charge fees for those applications. Commercial certificate of appropriateness. The first one was residential. Commercial would be 200. Residential would be 100. And then a failure to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. That would be a fine that is added. We have had a number of instances where residents do work without securing an application or approvals. And we would like to just deter against that. So when someone purchased a house in the historic district, we would like them to be notified. And maybe this will incentivize real estate agents, brokers, those sales to do their due diligence a little bit more and display that information that the homes are in a historic district and need approval from the town of Lewisburg. The simple lot or recombination that fee is, was already previously charged will be up to $50 from $35. A zoning letter, informational or verification zoning letter, $50 from $25. A social district letter of approval, which is essentially the same thing as a zoning letter of verification, but for the social district, $50. A fee in lieu for open space per lot, $2,000. Now, this was a fee that we were not charging before, but for large-scale developments, as we have been seeing proposals for large-scale developments, the town can recoup some of the fees as if a developer did not want to have open space, they currently can use a fee in lieu. But we want to set that at a dollar amount. So $2,000 would be the fee in lieu amount for developers. Preliminary plat, we were not charging a preliminary plat fee before. We would charge $100 for preliminary plats. Final plats, the fee went up from $250 to $450 plus $20 per lot, which was already charged before the per lot fee. Then, failure to obtain required sign permit fee, $100. Very frequently, we see businesses or sometimes residents who have home occupations install signage without obtaining those approvals. And typically, in a municipality, they do charge fines for not obtaining those approvals. And then disposal of signage in right of way, $10 per sign. Again, we see an influx of businesses hiring signage companies to come and place anywhere from 20 to 40 signs in the right of way. The business owners don't place them. They hire a company. They might not even be in town in Lewisburg. They may be in another state. And they're just hiring the companies to come and place signage. So we, one day, we wake up and there's 15 signs in the right of way that just popped up out of nowhere. And I call the business owners. As a courtesy, whenever code enforcement collects signage, I do call the business owners to try to get in touch with somebody and ask them, do they want to A, keep the sign? Or B, us dispose of it? But I'm thinking that a lot of them, in multiple instances, say, you know, we really don't care about the sign. And then it comes to town staff too. It's a responsibility of us to dispose of those. So we want to start introducing a fee for that so that we can recoup those costs of us disposing of the signage. Last fee is temporary or special event permit, $50, whereas we were not charging a fee for special events or temporary permits. Those are all the fees as they change. And then the last page would be the new list of fees adopted today.
Okay, any questions from the council?
I have a lot of problems with this. Let's start with the number four, certificate of appropriateness. That seems very steep. These are residential folks. And are you talking like if I want to put, change the fence in my front yard and come to you and say, I'm going to have to pay $100 fee to do that?
Yes and no. There's, there are routine maintenance, a list of routine maintenance items for historic preservation, which details routine maintenance on a house, like fixing the steps, fixing the porches, replacing your roof shingles. Then there's a list of minor works, projects that are listed for historic preservation, such as a fence, such as patios, driveways, wall, furnishings around the property itself. And neither one of those, either minor works or routine maintenance, has to obtain a certificate of appropriateness. The only certificates of appropriateness are obtained when a major project is proposed, such as changing the siding on the whole entire facade, changing windows, changing historical features.
Still, that seems to be a pretty high fee. I mean, what's the expense to the town? I mean, we have, the historic commissioner are all volunteers. We don't pay them. I mean, it's what?
There's some like paperwork, I think, about the terrorist part. Maybe the ladies up front possibly, depending on who pays the request. I agree, it's a little high. And especially if we're doing a penalty, that $100 versus $150. I might say I'm doing what I want. I'll just pay the $150 and skate the hassle. $50, I think, can be appropriate for the number four. Because you want to encourage people to follow the correct process, right? I understand having a fee, but I do agree $100 is a bit high when the penalty is only $150 itself.
Yeah, I agree. I think $50 being a more reasonable fee.
Understood. That's perfectly fine. And I just wanted to mention, there's a couple of the other nuances that go into it, like signage. So for example, it's state law that notice, I have to provide signage in the yards. We have to, the town has to pay for those signs. Those signs have to be there for at least 10 days. During that time, there's weatherization, rain, wind, what have you. Sometimes the signs get knocked over and we have to recoup the money somehow for signage, for mailings. Postage is now $10 per certified letter. And we have to send, I have to send out certified letters to each adjacent property owner, which could sometimes be 10. Sometimes it could be two. Sometimes it could be 15. And so those charges do add up over time. And with each month, we having new proposals and new applications, I feel that some of those fees should be recouped. And I agree, though, maybe, maybe less than $100. That's fine. That's up to the council to decide.
My second question, what is a social district letter approval?
That would be a zoning letter of verification for the social district. So if a new business, a new bar or grill was to go into downtown and they needed, for whatever reason, a letter of verification that they were allowed to sell alcohol in the social district, then that's when we would charge that fee. There would be no fee for it.
We require, it's something that, it's something like their insurance company requires.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. In that instance only. And then none of the businesses existing would have to pay that fee at all.
And I have a lot of problems with number 10. Not this, I don't think we should have a fee. I don't think we should allow it, period. We should require these developers to have the open spaces. A lot of developers are now just paying these fees to get out of it. And what we end up with is these developments that are nothing. I feel that we should accept, allow that to happen. We should demand that these developers provide green spaces when they put in their developments. We should demand that these developers provide green spaces when they put in their developments, period.
That's a great point, and I will have to check to see if it's in line with the general statutes. Now, general statutes may allow them to have the fee in lieu, but I would have to go back and do.
In that case, I'd jack it up.
And that's why, that's the reason why it's set at a higher dollar amount. I think, I think general statutes do allow it.
This is also for a lot, so, you know, if you want to do a development, that is quite a lot of money.
Oh, no, no, and the fee would be?
Yeah.
Yeah, two thousand.
That's not the blanket fee, it's per lot, yeah.
All right, those are my concerns.
Okay, well, if you wouldn't mind, could we hold off on that one until I can do some more research? Sure. And find out if it's in line with the general statutes.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, in seeking a motion for this, could we approve, get a motion to approve with the exceptions or the modifications that we've just made here tonight? And that will be item number ten, we kind of would hold off on that, which would be included in the motion, as well as the changing of the certificate of appropriateness to fifty dollars from one hundred?
I make that.
Okay, so been moved in property second, that we adopt the motion to approve to modify the proposed fees with the exceptions of what we've just mentioned. All in favor? All opposed. Okay, ayes have. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Satawhite. Okay, we're moving on to the next one, which is notification of unsafe buildings. Mr. Satawhite.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. There was a law enforcement related incident at a dwelling on Miller Springs Road back in early September. Upon the investigation of the incident, officers responded, noted that condition of the building was in decay and may not be safe for human habitation. According to our ordinance, one report from a staff member of the town could direct me to go and perform a preliminary investigation, which I did. And in the middle of September, during the investigation, there were noted several violations of the minimum housing code and documented, including bad conditions of walls, effective construction, health hazards. And staff would like for a full survey and inspection to take place, along with the county building inspector, to determine if the house is fit for human habitation. According to our ordinance, section ten, one thirty-one facilities, every dwelling and unit shall contain not less than a kitchen sink, lavatory tub or shower and water closet, all in good working condition. Every plumbing feature, water and waste pipe shall be properly installed and maintained in good sanitary working condition, free from defects, leaks and obstructions. B, water supply and sewage disposal facilities, every dwelling unit shall have connected to the sink, lavatory tub or shower inadequate supply of both cold water and hot water. All water shall be supplied through a pipe distribution system that is safe, sanitary and free from defects and is connected to the supply of potable water. Heating facilities, every dwelling unit shall have heating facilities which are properly installed, maintained and in a good, safe working condition and capable of safely and adequately heating all habitable rooms and bathrooms in every dwelling unit located therein to a temperature of at least seventy degrees. Electrical system, all electrical wires, receptacles, wiring, switches, fuse boxes or other electrical equipment shall be maintained in a good state of repair, safe, capable of being used and connected to an approved source of electricity. Every dwelling and dwelling unit shall have wired for electric lights and convenience receptacles. Every habitable room shall contain at least two floor or wall type electric convenience receptacles connected in an approved manner. Structural conditions, interior walls, floors and ceilings, the interior walls, floors and ceilings shall be furnished, finished, excuse me, with suitable materials which can be cleaned and maintained in a sanitary condition using normal household cleaning methods, rodent proof and sound condition and good repair, safe to use and capable of supporting the load which normal use may cause to be placed thereon. There should be no use on the ground floors, bathroom floor surfaces or water closet, compartment floor surfaces shall be constructed and maintained so as to be reasonably impervious to water and to permit such surfaces to be cleaned easily and maintained in sanitary condition. Stairs, porches and aberteneses, every inside and outside stair porch and abertenes shall, thereto shall be safe to use and capable of supporting the load that normal use may cause to be placed thereupon. There shall be kept in sound condition and good repair. Windows and doors, every window, exterior door in basement or cellar door shall be substantially watertight, waterproof and rodent proof and kept in sound working condition and good repair. Those are all the elements that I highlighted that were in decay or in defective condition in the home. As you can see in your packets, there are a number of pictures, including ceilings that contain mold, it seems to me. Electrical appliances that are open and could cause shock hazards. Plumbing that is not in good working condition. It seems that some of the plumbing is defective. It seems that it's been leaking in the house and probably causing mold in the kitchen area. It seems that the cabinetry, the masonry underneath the plumbing is becoming decayed and not in good sanitary condition. Again, electrical receptacles where the electric socket is sticking out of the wall, the exposed, the wires are exposed. Ceiling fan where the same electrical wires are exposed and the mechanical system of the ceiling fan is just not in good shape and condition. Another room where electrical wiring for lighting is not in good condition. It's exposed, it's hanging from the ceiling. And more of, it looks like wall, there's maybe a mold problem in the home. Where it looks like there's mold coming from the ceiling and around the tops of the ceilings. In the tub, it seems that the plumbing in the tub, shower area is not in good working condition. It seems that there may be some sort of mechanism used to turn hot and cold water on, but it seems that the plumbing itself is not in stable working condition. If there's duct tape on the back of the plumbing there. The wiring, electrical wiring, there was a number of extension cords, which are not a problem, but the way that they're being used in the home is definitely unsafe. And then in the hallway, there was, it looked like, at least in my personal opinion, again, mold growing down the hallway. And then the biggest concern was probably the roof caving in in one of the bedrooms. Looks as if the roof is caving in, there is insulation and the upper attic of the home exposed there in that room. And then the last picture just shows a close up of it. It's unfortunate that there are homes sometimes like this in this condition. It's our understanding that people, you know, this is obviously a dwelling where people are living, but us as a town of Lewisburg, we have to ensure safety for all of our citizens. This is a safety concern, it's definitely a health hazard concern. And we would like to ask that the town council direct myself to involve the county building inspector, because the county administers the building code here, and we do a full survey and inspection of the dwelling.
Has the owner been contacted?
They have, yes, sir.
What was their response?
When I went to do my preliminary inspection, they at first denied me entry. So I had to call on Chief Lincoln to prove to them that according to our ordinance, it's me, I'm the town's building inspector, I have right to entry in any property during reasonable times, reasonable hours of the day. This was during the day. Chief Lincoln then returned to the property with me and I was subsequently allowed in to do my preliminary investigation. After I told them what could take place after this, I told them that I would have to come to the town council to display my findings and the town council would direct me, along with the county building inspector, to go back and do a full survey. So they are aware that the full survey would take place. And it could either, the building inspector could either say, hey, these things are all fixable. You fix them in this amount of time and then everything's okay. This has come to a state of decay that it needs to be condemned.
So what you're asking is that, plus give you and the county inspector to go back for this property. Upon your assessment of it, you would then make an official report?
Correct, and then the county building inspector would make, I would make an official report of the findings. And the county building inspector, like I said, he would either order it to be renovated and fixed or condemned. More than likely, those would be the two options.
And that would be the county's responsibility as opposed to us?
Yes, because their inspector, Mr. Harris, he's well versed in the North Carolina building code. And I'm just not. He's a certified building inspector, so we want to get them involved.
Once a property is found to be in a state where it's condemned, what happens to the occupants?
They must vacate immediately and the property is condemned subsequently within a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
About how long?
It depends. I haven't gone through the process before, but it depends on the level of decay or deterioration that the property is in. Like I said, there could be the instance where the county building inspector says, you know, these things are, you know, kind of bad, but they could be fixed. And he would give them a amount of time to fix them. If not, then it is, it's out of their hands, out of his hands. And it's a code to the building code. If it's not up to that code, then.
Is this a rental property?
No, sir, it is privately owned.
So if the building's condemned, what happens to the building? What is supposed to happen to the building?
It'll get demolished.
By?
Okay.
By the town. We would be the ones to demolish it.
Okay.
So will they be able to rebuild on that property or that property will be sold?
Essentially, yes, but I need to do some more research on that because I don't want to give a definite answer on that.
We build a owner for the cost of the demolition?
Yes, we do.
I don't want to speak for everyone, but I know my concerns are, obviously, this is unsafe, something should be done about it. But we just made a proclamation that this is hunger. So where does it start? It's November, we're having our first hard freeze tonight. It's only going to get colder and we have to look at three out and we would be, it's like putting a family out of their home in the coldest part of the year, that that's by one whole time.
I understand. It puts us, it puts us in a very difficult position. I will say, it's kind of the lesser of the two evils.
Is there presently any heat in the home now?
When we, when I performed our preliminary investigation, it was a hot day, so I don't know, I'm not sure. Yes, but I don't, I don't think central AC and he, in my opinion, I don't think it's running, no, sir. I don't believe so, but I don't know for sure.
Okay, we gave you permission tonight, how soon will you and the county person go in? Would there be a lapse between the time we give you permission to go in there? Or would you, or would you be a?
Probably a couple of days, unless you wanted it to be a longer lapse of time. You said, hey, wait a week and then go, then I would have to go in your direction, in the town council's direction.
Is there anybody in the house, man, and family members to get back?
Yes, yes.
Are there any children?
Not that I know of, no, no. It's all adults, and like I said, this was a law enforcement related incident where there was narcotics involved. So not only is the house decayed, but it's been used for narcotics possession.
Because they rebuild, because a lot of time when you get the same people back to the same area, they may have a tendency to.
Do the same things, yes, ma'am. Now, yeah, I would just need to do a little bit more research on that part. I just don't know personally if they will be able to rebuild. I don't think that the town takes the land, so technically the land still is theirs. We just are condemning the house. So yes, and essentially, yes, they should, they could be able to build it back. I just want to make sure that's to the letter of the law.
Okay, all right. I'd like to make a suggestion, if we approve this, just give you a week before you begin your inspection. Being that I'm just premising this on the most immediate weather report. Within the next couple of days or so, there is some freezing weather that's coming about, as well as then the next week or so, according to the weather forecast, the weather will be improving. May I suggest, if it's okay with the council, we just approve this and just give him permission to begin a week afterwards there. Okay. All right, I'd like to make a motion as such then. It's been moved in property second, that we approve this motion to direct the staff of the Franklin County Building Inspector, as well as our local inspector for inspection of the building on three oh two Miller Springs Road to begin approximately seven days after the approval of this tonight. All in favor? All opposed? The next is our travel and training policy amendment, Mr. Metz.
Mayor of Town Council, thank you. In front of you tonight is an amendment to our travel and training policy. The policy that was originally presented to you, in the back portion of that policy, stated that we would pay per diem with what state requirements are. However, in our past processes, we have always paid actual, because we can control the spending to some extent with that. And so what we did is we've added, they'll be reimbursed actual up to eighty dollars per day on a full day of travel and up to sixty on a partial day. So I'm asking that you consider approving this update to the travel policy related to travel and training.
All right, any questions for Mr. Metz?
Typically, this is for, this is typically for people who would go to conferences or classes and things like that. So if you're going to a local meeting, typically food would be provided. And so we wouldn't really do reimbursement, we still reimburse miles if they drive or if they don't drive the town car, but otherwise. With that. Yes, sir.
Isn't this going to create an awful lot of busy work?
Uh, no, sir, because we don't, we don't have a tremendous amount of training or people attending stuff on a regular basis. I mean, we may have it in phases, but as long as they provide the receipts, we go through and can add it up, we're good.
The state did away with these requirements years ago and just basically paid it per diem and let the individual, I mean, it's not, it's not like we're giving them a fortune here. I mean, eighty bucks doesn't go all along, you figure a room and a couple of meals.
Well, this was our, our cap for eighty dollars a day. The state, I think, is a hundred and fifty, if I recall correctly. It was a hundred and fifty, because we just, we just had to pay an employee this off the per diem.
I guess my feeling is, if we're only paying them eighty bucks, I mean, I don't think it's worth the effort to make them get receipts and have our staff have to go through and modify it, you know? And if they're gone for twenty-four hours, I would just say, give them the eighty dollars to cover expenses.
So my, I guess my caveat to this would be, would you want to say that we'll pay you eighty dollars per day to travel regardless?
Yeah.
Regardless.
Mostly this is for the town staff, right?
It is.
Right. I mean, like you said, I mean, we're way under what the state is paying. So to me, this is a very minimal amount, you know, and these folks are taking, they're basically improving themselves for our benefit.
If you would like to make that motion for us to cap it at eighty dollars per day, we can amend that. I just need to make that, if that's what you all want to do.
What's, what's the rest of the council feel?
Houses say that they are going to the meeting place. I mean, do, we have to register them for them to go?
The only way we would know. The only way we would know is once they're registered, that they're in a class. Whether they eat or not, we don't know that if we just pay them.
Well, I mean, okay, so this is just for eating.
This is just for eating. This is just for fo, for food.
Oh, this doesn't cover the.
Lodging?
No, we, see, the lodging covers, we'll cover the lodging, because typically when they go to class, we get like a block of room rates that we can get. This is just food portion right here, um, because we have had people, we, right, we've had people that come back and we've had to say, mm-mm, we don't pay for this. I mean, you don't eat lobster at home. Why are you trying to buy lobster on the town? I mean.
Tom, you guys, what is the current, it seems like it says they recommend it for me, and like, we don't have one set.
We, we did with the last one. We rec, we adopted the state rates, and this right here is, is going back to actual reimbursement for.
You said the state right now is a hundred and fifty?
I think it's a hundred and fifty, if I recall correctly.
So you were suggesting the compromise for Dr. Silver's concern is maybe set a per diem rate, but at eighty instead of actual expenses? I'd be comfortable with that, just per diem to keep the, the paperwork simple, but lower than state. Does, does that suit you, Dr. Silver?
Yeah, I agree.
So, so, so per diem across the board at eighty bucks, that's it, per day? Okay, full day, so you want to do eighty every day or eighty for just full days and remain at sixty for partial days?
I don't know, but they might need to find a McDonald's. Eighty dollars for one person for a whole day. I mean, I know some restaurants are higher, but.
Surely they should, being that they're on town business, they should practice a little bit of, uh, restraint in, in, in doing that. If they wanted to engage in a little bit more, uh, extravagant thing, um, perhaps maybe they would subsidize it themselves. If they wanted to have a, a larger meal, more so than eighty dollars. And I do know that there are some restaurants that you will charge eighty dollars for a dinner, uh, and if you want to use their full per diem on one meal and, uh, comes out a little bit more, uh, they should.
That leaves the question of the partial days, do you only get it sixty or make it eighty as well?
What do you use to define a partial day?
Half a day.
I, I think sixty is.
Okay, okay. So we'll have sixty per day, partial.
Two meals versus two, three.
Yeah, and then eighty for full day. Okay.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay, unless, you know, we, we want to try to maintain an audit trail of some type as well, I would think, uh, so.
Well, I mentioned there's other restrictions, like obviously not alcohol.
Right, right.
So you do have to document.
Yeah, sure. So have some form of documentation. Okay, alright, any other questions? If not, could we get a, a motion to approve it?
I make the motion to set the per diem rates at eighty for a full day and sixty for a day.
Okay, it's been moved in property second that we, uh, uh, adopt, that we have our travel and training policy amendment for, uh, per diems of eighty dollars for a full day and, uh, sixty dollars for partial days. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes happy.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, uh, water and supply study, uh, phase two. Uh, Mr. Medlin.
Mayor of Town Council, in front of you, uh, is a request to move forward with our water supply study, the phase two portion. Uh, last December, Hazen Sawyer came in and they provided the council with, um, a feasibility study related to water, which discussed water demand projections, uh, our, uh, current system capacities, as well as, uh, water supply alternatives, uh, and looking at an upstream reservoir storage, uh, system. Uh, once that was presented, it was requested that we continuously look at phase two. We're to, we're to the second part of this study, which is phase two, which discusses the, uh, town's water shortage response plan, and what we're asking, uh, is, uh, for you all to authorize the town administrator to enter to a contract with Hazen Sawyer to complete the phase two of the water supply feasibility study. Uh, this proposed scope of work is not to exceed sixty-two thousand dollars.
Do you have funds for your mark for this already? Have you done the audit?
Uh, we did originally, um, so, I mean, there's funds there, but just want to make sure that you all were comfortable with us moving forward with that.
Any other questions? If not, could we get a motion to approve this going forward? Council action. A motion?
I think a motion will be approved.
Yeah.
Thank you, council. Okay, we have a motion, uh, in property second that we approve, uh, to authorize the town administrators to enter, no, I'm sorry. Is that it? Yeah, to enter into the contract with Hazen Sawyer to update the town's water shortage response. All in favor? All opposed? Again, our eyes happy. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Okay, number twelve, uh, the administrators' report.
Mayor, thank you, sir. Uh, just to give you a few things that, that's happened. Uh, on October the eighteenth, staff worked to provide citizens, uh, with information related to a water main break, uh, along Johnson Street. Uh, staff is aware that not all citizens are on our current social media platforms. Staff is working to identify and incorporate additional notification processes, uh, into our current systems. Uh, one of those is we've reached out with Franklin County Emergency, uh, Systems to see if they can help identify who they use that would help us either, um, piggyback off them or depending on the cost, we've looked at other systems as well, so, uh, we are well aware of this. Um, we did have a staffing change in the midst of that as well, which, uh, made things a little more difficult as well. So just wanted to let you know where we are with that. I'll keep you. Yes, sir.
Why didn't we, why were we seventeen feet off in our?
Uh, our locator was not on point where it should be.
Okay, is that a machine or a person?
A machine and a person.
So are we fixing that?
We are. We've actually had to go and get a new locator because we tried another job and it was off seven feet. So we've determined it's our locator, so.
Alright.
And that's in the works.
I'd like to hear that. That was gonna be my suggestion, if we don't already, like, take it as a lesson and to develop like an emergency communications protocol, like, establish your chain of command, depending who's on duty, uh, what order to escalate. So glad you, you're already.
Yes, yes. Uh, town hall will be closed tomorrow, November the eleventh, uh, in observance of Veterans Day. Um, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of our veterans for their service. Uh, our first annual Turkey Trot will be November the twenty-seventh. Registration will begin at seven with the race beginning at eight AM. Uh, the registration, uh, site will be our community station. Uh, Christmas parade entries are still available through twelve-three. Uh, currently, our vendor market has over fifty vendors. Uh, the Christmas parade and the Christmas tree lighting service, uh, will be held all on December the sixth, which is a Saturday. Um, the market will run from nine to one. The parade begins at three, and the tree lighting will follow, uh, the parade roughly at dusk.
What are you saying?
Uh, just to see if we could get the vendors going, our vendor market, because we've tried it on Sunday, we don't have good response. Uh, we've got some concerns about having all of our events spread out, so we're trying to do one day and see if that brings people together.
Have we checked to see if this conflicts with any other towns?
Yes, so, so Youngsville has their Christmas parade on Saturday morning at ten. Uh, so we did, we, we checked everybody to make sure that no one had.
And last year, we found out last minute.
Right, right, right. Uh, so we did that. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, the staff for their involvement, um, with the Halloween event. Technically, it's not a town event, however, town's involved with it, uh, our community comes together. Uh, and approximately twenty-five hundred children and adults came through our town last Friday night. Uh, Electric Cities conducted a safety inspection of our electric department, of the processes and equipment, and there were no deficiencies identified. Uh, one thing I will mention, um, that I would like to mention, uh, that, uh, that was not only your report, is the middle school, there is a middle school flag football, uh, team for young ladies, and they're having a championship uh, on Thursday, November the thirteenth, at Jonah Park. They currently use our park for that. This is the first ever. Uh, and they've made it to the championship, and it will be from four to seven-thirty, so if you'd like to go out, that'd be great. Uh, and last, uh, LGC PB mayor's update, uh, we had our annual, um, review with the state. They're pleased that we have a audit in, and they've asked us to continue to move forward with getting the other two in. Uh, and we're working with, uh, PB mayors to, uh, get our entries from them, so we can get those in our system and begin the work, uh, around the first of December on our second audit, so just wanted to let you know that.
Is there anything we can do to move forward on the Depot Hill project, or do we have to wait till all we got?
We have to wait till all those audits. I've been, I've been to LGC asking them if there was any way we could potentially get money, and they said if we could get the next audit in, they would consider looking at us, so. And Jennifer handed me, uh, financials this afternoon as I was leaving, so I'm going to pass those out. Carrie, I'll get you one. Um, and I'd like to thank all employees for what they do, um, and for our employees who serve in the military, we want to thank them as well. And I attended, I don't know, the chief may, uh, mention it as well, but one of our, uh, police officers, who is a veteran, was honored this past weekend in Rocky Mount, uh, through the Tar River Peacemakers Quilt Guild, I believe is what it was called. Um, but one of our officers was rec, uh, was rec, uh, recognized, uh, this past weekend, so just want to let you know that as well. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. The next is the mayor's report. I normally do my, what we call my senior boxes, which I deliver on a monthly basis to the various senior citizens around town. Uh, as always, I enjoy that moment, as far as talking to the sen, senior citizens of Lewisburg. I also like to take this special moment to express my gratitude. And I crafted this letter that I would like to take this moment to read to the citizens of Lewisburg. I write to you not just because I'm your re-elected mayor, but as a humble servant who has witnessed something extraordinary, something that could only happen in a community as special as ours. When the North Carolina General Assembly passed HB one eight-three singling out Lewisburg and only Lewisburg with election rules designed to make your voice harder to hear, many said our campaign was over before it began. They stacked the deck, they changed the rules mid-game, that imposed burdens on our small town that hundreds of other North Carolina municipalities never faced. But they underestimated something fundamental. And that's the heart of Lewisburg. The path they set for us was designed to be impossible. But every one of you proved that when a community believes in itself, when neighbors stand together, when a cause is just, nothing is impossible. We, what we accomplished together was nothing short of remarkable. While others had institutional backing, we had something more powerful: you. We proved that small towns still matter. We proved that grassroots organizing can overcome institutional obstacles. We proved that when you try to silence the people's voice, they respond by shouting louder. Most importantly, we proved that Lewisburg Strong isn't just a slogan, it's who we are. Thank you for believing. Thank you for fighting. Thank you for proving that Lewisburg Strong is more than words. It's our truth. With deepest gratitude and renewed commitment, I thank all of you. Mayor Christopher Neal. Thank you. Next is our police report. Uh, Chief Lincoln.
Just a few things to go over. Um, Administrator Medlin talked about one of our officers receiving a quilt of valor over the weekend for his military service. Officer Max Power. Served in the military for, I believe it was fifteen years, with more duty stations than I have fingers. Uh, it's very well deserved. You met our newest full-time officer earlier this evening. We have also hired two part-time officers. Uh, Leslie Terry comes to us from Henderson, and Seth Woods comes to us from Youngsville. Wanted to recognize Detective Coker for attending the North Carolina Homicide Investigators Conference and becoming a member of that association. And wanted to recognize seven, uh, military members that are in the police department. We have four full-timers with Officer Max Power, Officer Schumate, Sergeant Castaneda, and Officer Richardson. We also have three reserve officers, Officer Vajani, Officer Bailey, and retired Officer Brinkley, who also served in the military.
Thank you. Okay, uh, fire report, anyone from, right if I may? Okay, thank you. Alright, next is council comments. Dr. Stover, Councilman Stover, anything you'd like to share this evening?
The, um, Lewisburg Methodist Church is moving forward with, uh, establishing a white flag shelter. We're going to be having training for volunteers on December the seventh. So we're looking for volunteers who are, what a volunteer does is, uh, oversee the shelter. We usually have people work like six-hour shifts, and we always have two, a male and a female. So, uh, if you have any interest in that, please contact our church, uh, and, um, we'll get you the information. But, uh, the church is committed to making sure that nobody has to freeze in the upcoming winter. Oh, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Wood?
I would like to say Happy Veterans Day to all of those brave men and women who have served. And I hope everyone had a happy and safe and blessed Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wright?
Um, um, most of my time was spent running around trying to get people together to help me campaign, on my campaign team, calling and all that good stuff. And, um, South Main, we did a outreach program on, um, October eleventh, where we packed backpacks and we gave out blankets, toiletries, hats, gloves, and lava toiletries and blankets to the homeless, and we gave them, uh, excellent, we had a hot dog, and I can also prepare for them, and we enjoyed it. And also, um, we get, um, yesterday, I, along with Sharon Rosby, we did honor our veterans at church. We honored the veterans and saw them from the community that was there, um, with bags, uh, that we had different gifts, gifts in. So you gave them a little pale paint and stuff in the bags and stuff, and that was really great. And we, one of our veterans who's retired, well, he was in Ford dress.
Marines.
In a bomb. And I thought that was awesome. And so it was a nice service there. Reverend Rosie approved that we do this, and it was great. It was great. Everybody, I got a lot of calls, the guys and ladies, so we did have, what, two ladies up there? Thanking for gifts that I hadn't given, because they didn't expect. Thanking for gifts that had been given because they didn't expect.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Baker?
Um, just to say thank you, always a pleasure. As always, I look forward to seeing our community as we gear up for our holidays season. I'm signed up for the turkey travels.
I'll be right there with you, ma'am.
Okay, and, uh, I'd like to remind the citizens again, our, at our, uh, December meeting. Uh, just want to let you know our new council members will be, uh, sworn in. So that will be December, our December meeting. Uh, stand by because there, if, depending on how many people be there, we may, uh, switch the venue over to the, uh, operations center if we have enough people there. So we'll, we'll let you know, uh, before that time. Again, I'd also want to thank all of the, uh, new council members and, uh, congratulate you on your, uh, uh, election to the Lewisburg Town Council. And, uh, I also want to let you know that I have a, a, what is called an orientation packet. A, 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 a binder, uh, with key information about the town of Lewisburg and, uh, information that I hope that you will find very informative and useful. So, uh, thank you. And, uh, next item is, uh, a motion to adjourn. Okay, it's been moved in property second that we'll adjourn. Thank you for coming out, ladies and gentlemen. And again, that meeting will be, uh, the next town council will be, no, December, December ninth. Okay, thank you so much. No.
Unfortunately, hasn't got all our cuts in a row yet.
All right, thank you all for coming out.